Partnering with thought, we're just trying to get all the parties together for that meeting. So that's important. My electric bus update, and then a second round of my webinar on that with Dave. Today it was Dave and Matt LaFave. And there was a lot of conversations about buses and how long the battery will last. So today, I think it'll be more, it'll be interesting as we keep moving through the process to actually create an electrification plan. Today was much more vendor specific, but it was perfect timing to be able to give you a report. We are definitely looking into all the pieces of electric buses next time. Our next meeting is all devoted to charging stations. So we'll report back on charging stations. But I do believe, just my opinion and my learning, I think we're gonna need more of the faster charging stations because it appears as though a battery, and this is what they said today, will go from 100% to 75% after anything below 30 degrees. So I think we have a little work to do on that.
That's true. As electric vehicles are...
So stay tuned, but I wanted to let you know that some good news for the board, policy development. I think policy is one of those things that you say we're gonna do, and we're pushing it to the corner of our desk and move on to the next 50 other things we have to do. But I have worked with school boards, sharing the practice with getting work out of this. And I have gotten two sets of policy moved to school boards and move forward. And we've come up, I've been working with Jessica, and I've been doing things. I have training next week for myself in Board Docs. So we should be following right along with the board agendas in January. Very close to that, and we'll be able to start seeing pieces of it as well. And we'll be having a workshop for the board on Board Docs so that you understand that. Half Day Professional Development Day last week was a rough week as we spoke up first part of the report of our meeting tonight. But staff did a great job coming together for professional development. We did do a few things, changed some things around so that we could provide support for people with dealing with children with grief. So that was a piece we changed in our agenda. That was a piece, and we also had other trainings throughout the day. It was a good half day for that. And we had our auction, and I'm happy to report, and I was a little panicky yesterday when I looked at the bus garage because I thought everything was still there, as possibly be. But Matt LaFave assured me yesterday that you didn't see all the tags. And then I went over today, and much of it's gone. So I'll be able to report back. I do know that what we made, I don't have an exact number tonight, but will offset the incident of mold that we had in the intermediate building, not completely, but a good portion of it. I think working with Bridget Street Auction was a really positive way of doing it. We won't, I think if we stand top of it, we won't have to get ourselves into that place again, we have that much of it. So the bus drivers are very happy with us because that means four more buses and the van over the bus garage. So and the exciting part was the old treadmills left. I couldn't believe anyone wanted them, but they're gone, so. And the shed, the one shed out by Papero Field was emptied. And we were really going to tear it down and throw it away. And Bridget Street Auction was like, no, we can sell it, and they did. So shed is gone too. So Matt's excited about our next auction. I'm like, no, not for a while. But anyway, that's pretty much where we are with my stuff.
Thank you. Mr. Moreno?
So as Mr. Storm said, you know, last week was a rough week. You know, I 100% backed the recognition that was stated at the beginning of Mr. Manchester and Ms. Rivas. The middle school was not an easy place to be on Monday morning, nor do I believe any building was. But I can speak specifically about the middle school since that's where I am. They did a fantastic job in bringing the faculty together on Monday morning, explaining what happened, giving us facts. And I think that one of the biggest things is that the way they presented it, it allowed some people who had were just finding out what had happened and who the student was, a little time to process before they had to go meet with students. There were a few people that were visibly upset. You know, they did a fantastic job of, you know, giving people some time. At the same time, I want to just tell you the job that our sixth grade teachers did on Monday morning with those students, and our counselors, and our psychologists, and everybody across the district when they met the students that first time. They don't teach us in college how to deal with a situation like this. You know, I know we have some people on the board who are in the medical field and, you know, may have got some training in how to deal with that. We don't as teachers. So it's probably one of the toughest things any of us would ever have to endure as a teacher. I think our teachers across the district did a fantastic job in consoling, comforting, and supporting the kids. And hopefully, we don't have to do that for a very long time. It'd be nice if it was ever again. You know, with that happening on top of the situation in Chezzi, I think, you know, it was a difficult month. You know, I think, you know, the student had gone through three of our four buildings. I think Mr. Barry and Mr. Bannon are gonna face some challenges, you know, maybe in coming weeks when their brother returns. And knowing the leadership in the high school, they're gonna handle that and with the best they possibly can. That's not gonna be an easy situation. So I just think that, well, I hate to say it, if you want to look for a model on how to handle that, I think Peru was a model that could be shared with a lot of other districts. So that's really all I have. I brought your note. I hope you guys all have a happy Thanksgiving next week. And, you know, I know many of our staff are looking forward to a few days off. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, administrative reports.
Mr. Dave Yeh, Cyber Security.
Now we find how awkward it is to...
All right. Stand far there, but just not position that way. So thanks for giving us a few moments tonight just to give you a status update on where we are with specific safeguards that we have in place on the cybersecurity front. So coming off of Cyber Security Month, which was October, and some recent local districts that have struggled with this concern specifically, and the increase across the state and the nation and the amount of cyber attacks that districts are seeing, we thought it was a good time to revisit and share some of the things that we are doing here on campus from the technology side of things to keep all of our sensitive data secure, both students and staff, to keep a safe learning environment up and running, and keep kids on campus, a big thing there. Okay, so the importance of cybersecurity in school districts. So cybersecurity plays a vital role in safeguarding all of our students and staff's personal information, preventing data breaches, and maintaining the integrity of our educational systems, right? And our student information system, which is kind of the central hub for all of our demographic and academic data. The education industry is consistently in the top 10 for the most targeted industries for cyber criminals. And that is because we are rich in data. So that is data that can be obtained and sold and is extremely profitable, which makes us a very big target. So personal information, names, social security numbers, email addresses, academic information, demographic information, health records, addresses, all of that stuff that's contained in our student information system are the areas that we as a team work to protect at all times. What are some of these common threats? So most recently in the news, I would say you're hearing a lot about these ransomware attacks where basically your data is obtained and held hostage until payment is received. This is, you know, it sounds, it's a big, it sounds very scary. And economically, financially, it is trustless. So these are the most common attacks that we've seen really across local districts here in our region and across the state. Phishing scams, we have been battling, seems like since I've been in this position, so it's definitely been on the uptick. That primarily comes through email. Data breaches and denial of service attacks are two of the other most common threats. But the two biggest that are facing districts today are ransomware and phishing scams. So what we're gonna do now is kind of build, you know, set the stage a little bit. We're gonna share some of the common recommendations that come from agencies that we partner with as we look to solidify our system, and then talk about some of the specific things that we've done here on campus as a team to put things in place to keep that data secure. That's where Jared will share a little bit about these recommended safeguards, and then Shane will pick you back up.
Jared Decap, one of the networking systems technicians here. Some of the recommended safeguards that we go by are the implementation of firewalls, intrusion detection systems, and strong network segmentation to protect against external threats, user authentication and access controls. So apply the enforcement of strong passwords, implementing two-factor authentication, and restricting access to sensitive systems. Some of the other methods are encrypting data, regularly backing up important information, and storing backup securely to ensure data integrity and availability. On average, our system processes around 36,000 emails a week. Of that 36,000, we reject 5% of those who are failing to comply with security protocols. So those mostly are phishing attacks, ransomware attacks. Our firewall blocks, we block malicious traffic going outbound and inbound to most countries, China, Russia, Ukraine, and the Middle East, and North Korea. And really, at this point, we block everything that's not, pretty much anything that's not the United States or the EU. We follow the principle of least privilege, meaning that users have access to the least amount of sensitive data, protected information systems to accomplish their job duties. All staff required to set up two-factor authentication on their school devices and Google accounts.
I'm just gonna pick you back on the least privileged. So the concept there is that if someone's account credentials were compromised, the minimal amount of damage could be attained into our student information system. So what we've done is we're starting to audit our account access to our school tool system, which is our student information system. And we restrict privilege, basically to give users just the amount of access to be able to do their job to the best of their ability, but not over access. And that's one of the things that, based on recommendations we have received, that stops that deep infiltration of the systems that we have opposed.
We back up all of our credit systems nightly, so that includes our phone system, all our servers. And we do that onsite, and we also then do a weekly offsite backup, which is in the cloud of all those systems. We also back up all the Google data, so that includes Google Drive data, all our documents. And then all our staff, you know, is backed up. That is backed up, housed here, and that's backed up in most of the cloud environment.
Hello, Shane Porter, your other networking systems tech. So implementation of this cybersecurity stuff, we work with a company, and actually a company, a division of the federal government called CISA. And they conduct regular security assessments. Once, I believe it's monthly, we get reports. They're constantly monitoring our network, which is pretty helpful. Developing and enforcing cybersecurity policies and procedures. We're working on establishing these clear guidelines regarding data handling, careful use of technology, instant response, and staff responsibilities. Providing cybersecurity awareness and training to faculty. Our annual training that all staff does through our vector solutions, where we're gonna hammer cybersecurity as a priority. Monitoring and incident response, so this is more stuff that we're actually implementing right now. Monitoring tools for threat detection, for example. We're deploying Sentinel One, which is a monitoring tool that watches our network 24/7. And we're actually starting that implementation tomorrow. Establishing incident response plan and team, creating a well-defined incident response plan, plenty of dedicated incident response team, and participating in regular drills and simulations. NAREC regularly has what do they call...
Tabletop exercises.
Simulations that we can participate in to go through the motions.
Yeah, so it kind of simulates an event, and then you form your incident response team. And you work through your response plan, which we have drafted, with the key players. The, there's one probably one that I don't know. So all of this, like these three pieces that you see highlighted now on the screen are things that we put in place based on feedback for districts that have gone through the experience. So we've worked with, we have an extensive network with technicians across our region, across the state. They provide feedback to each other. We learn from each other. And the Sentinel One platform, having that kind of software running, that's monitoring access, stops a huge percentage of the attacks. And it's like the number one recommended thing, along with multi-factor authentication that you see pop up, you know, pops up on everything. And now, so a lot of the stuff we put in place over the past three years has been through our work with other districts, some that have gone through the experience, as well as training that we've received through conferences and those types of things. There's still...
And just to round it out, regular incident assessments, obviously, this stuff changes by the day. So we gotta stay current and other policies.
Yeah, the hygiene scans provide us a lengthy report on possible vulnerabilities. And then they work with us on suggestions to fix and kind of patch what needs to be taken care of. So ongoing work, there'll be a lot of changes once we get the monitoring tools up and running that need to be in place. But overall, I feel like over the past three years, we've done a nice job of getting things in place that we've needed and staying up to date on them. Questions?
You mentioned least privileged, kind of this access to all of the world. Do they also have like zero trust policy for the network itself?
Yes, we do.
You mentioned, you kind of data breaches is one of the main forms of attacks. And you mentioned phishing. I'm just curious how much the idea of social engineering is part of that, and we're trying to that place or something.
It's a small piece of it.
Small piece of the vector training that we have for phishing and email, like responsibility use, responsible use and those types of things, and along with the analog to do so. Not as large...
I would encourage us to make a... Because I think when you talk about data breaches, that's one of the primary type factors, right? Is someone gets an email saying, Scott is late, we can't make it to the meeting. Terry, can you please pull this information from him? And she was like, oh my gosh, sure, right? Like, we had a set of CI, right? All the time, every week someone will put in a security camera. Jim Rose is texting me, the CEO, and wants this app the other time.
So they have, actually, the part of the kind of ongoing evaluation are the phishing campaigns that we push out to pick up on that. And then, once we have our kind of debriefs meeting with CISA, they'll provide us with kind of the ins and outs of why people chose this option versus that option in the emails that they receive. So that is some work that is being done. But then from there, we have to form the training plan that builds off of that.
Oh, so you're like that, so I understand. So that's pulling data from studies that were... Have we done the thing internally where we send staff, questionnaires?
Just try not to... So the answer is not yet.
Yeah. And then, sorry, my third question, this is all great stuff. The third question is, we talked about backups, and I love that we're doing the onsite and the... But I'm curious if you kind of explored the idea of having air gap remote? Because when you do a cloud backup, some system in our network includes credentials to talk to that remote system. And if our system gets compromised, the attackers want that way because they want to improve that remote data as well. So just kind of curious if that's something that we've discussed or what's...
It's, right now, we've evolved our backup strategy in the past year. So last year, we finally started adding cloud backups. So we're, we definitely are going to examine how to try and air gap that, try and air gap that more. Right now, we have that network segmentation piece. We have a pretty big switching project, just replace the older equipment that's going, that's gonna happen this, that's gonna happen this school year. So as part of that is full network segmentation of the entire network. So I think at that time, we will probably examine, making sure that the backups are, the backups internally are air gapped, and then anything in the cloud will be air gapped.
Thank you. Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
I thought Mr. Webanero was giving permission to ignore Mr. Storm's emails. They might be... Sure, I did understand that from that conversation.
Got a little bit of that.
Okay. Motion for reporting communications A through J. Accept those. Motion J. Motion is permitted. Second, Mr. Webanero, any questions on any? In all favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
What's that?
Consent agenda 12, A through J, have a motion. So we have a motion, this is permitted. Second, Mr. Webanero, any questions? Any questions at all on any of those? All in favor? No one opposed? Motion carried. Thirteen, consent agenda A through Q, and under N. We have a couple additions, Olivia Alstom, effective dates, September 2023. Not, I think not to exceed June 30, 2024. Compensation of B for $5,032. Step five, O1, pro-rated at 30%, 20% effective, 9/7 additional, 20% effective, 0.25. And then Tammy Myers, $34,698, pro-rated at 40%. And $23,133, pro-rated at 60%, vote effective 10/30. Marsha Hamilton, $46,264, pro-rated at 60%. And $57,831, pro-rated at 40%, vote effective 10/30. So I have a motion on A through Q. Mr. Webanero, second, Mrs. Mitchell, any questions on any? All in favor? Any one opposed? Motion carried. And fourteen, whole business, receiving the information pertaining to the charter coach bus.
We're actually moving forward with that information that we talked about last night. And we actually have a charter bus situation where we're partnering with Bequement Town to go to Harvard, Monmouth. And we make sure everyone understood that we have a process. So we make sure they understood we have to double, we have to work with Bequement Town to assure that we have the right one out of the list. And then also, when they come pick up our students, we'll do an inspection of the bus. So I think that we're at a good place, and it'll be part of our process of approval.
Did we just have a protocol study here? For the football, football, yes?
We did, we did. And that one fell on the table as well.
Okay, we're just receiving the information on that. Were there any questions on that protocol? Hey, thank you for doing that. I don't think there's any comment, and we don't count to have an executive session. Well, Mr. Peters is up here tonight for that whole reason, so we have a motion to adjourn. Motion, Mrs. Graves, second, second, Mrs. Mitchell, no one opposed, motion carried. Motion, Mrs. Graves, second, second, Mrs. Mitchell, no one opposed, motion carried. Negotiations, DFC, matter of the particular person, any employment, attendance history of particular employees and students at this time, we'd like to call for a motion, a second to executive session, and return to open session. So, I'll move, second, Webanero, second, please, all in favor? I, anyone opposed? Motion carried. Pleniplegions?
Pleniplegions, Susan, I, of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Berry, here. Ms. Boswell-Davies, here. Ms. Graves, here. Mr. Hamilton?
Here.
Ms. Mitchell, here. Mr. Peters?
Here.
Mr. Webanero?
Here.
Okay, um, approval of the agenda, motion to approve the agenda? Motion. Motion, Mrs. Mitchell, Mr. Webanero, all in favor? I. Motion to approve the minutes of December fourth regular meeting. Motion, Ms. Mitchell, second, Mr. Webanero, all in favor? I. No one opposed? And, do, do we don't have anybody on public comment now?
Not on the sign up, but you did have one in, uh, public comments.
In?
In the, on, the online ones.
Oh, I didn't have, I.
Ms. Metz, misread up. Um, so I did, and each board member, the two pronounced, she thought she was.
I looked earlier, and I didn't have it.
Um.
And she was wanting to come tonight, but I think maybe worried whether she had not.
Right, that's it.
Yes, um, and I had sent.
Everybody a copy of that? Okay, I printed them again.
Yeah, Betsy Metz had, had sent us some information from the League of Women Voters, which is really a fantastic program, that, um, they send students down to Albany, um, to meet with the, uh, our legislators, and the League of Women Voters pays for everything, hotel, you know, transportation, everything, so it's fantastic. So, there's a brochure, and then her letter, and, um, students will have to apply for it, so I think maybe she could probably have a meeting with Ms. Berry.
She sent stuff to, she sent stuff to me too today, and I did reach out to Matt, so Matt knows, served a backup.
Yeah. It's more of a personal kind of, you know, which got on the phone, gave me a comment out. Is that the other one, please? Let me see, this is, this is what she, she had to, oh, I thought, I didn't look at it too. Is that, like, yes, uh, okay, what happened is she sent us something very early in, uh, January, and there was something with her computer system, so she had, uh, blinged it and didn't get to us, but she, you know, just thanked us for, um, she spoke with me, with, um, it was Mr. Berry.
I know.
And I talked to her last night and told her that she certainly could come tonight, and I didn't get ahold of her, uh, with the weather and so on, but, um, they, they are just sending us all the information so that, I think what we can do is arrange a meeting between, uh, Mrs. Metz and, and, um, Helen to go over that, and a great opportunity for our students, or maybe a couple of our students to go down. Sure. Okay, so, superintendent's report.
So, um, topics that we're, I have tonight are obviously about electric buses, we're still working on that, um, we have, there was a postponement of one of our meetings, so we have one early tomorrow, uh, more, more information to come on that, um, we still are waiting to hear where we fall with some of, with some of the, um, grant opportunities with that. Another thing that happens tomorrow, and, um, our administrators are going to be going to CDES, um, to learn about the science of reading, a kickoff from the State Education Department, and, um, we are going to be using some COVID monies to provide an opportunity for our teachers, um, from PAT members essentially, teachers and teaching assistants from kindergarten, pre-kindergarten, excuse me, pre-K, all the way through twelfth grade, to, um, participate in a, um, reading academy for, to, to receive credential in, um, the various, um, aspects of reading, and so there's a lot more coming up for that for the teachers, um, they'll receive a s, um, period of, um, they'll be paid for their professional development, as well as we'll be paying for the actual course, they'll be going through New Paltz, and, um, New Paltz wrote a grant with the State Education Department to, um, reduce tuition at five hundred, nine hundred and fifty?
Yeah, it was five hundred dollars originally for each participant, and then they had a really big grant, and now it's fifty dollars.
Wow.
So, we really think it's a great opportunity, and they're really pushing the fact that it's not just, you know, we're all teachers of reading, so it doesn't matter, you know, one, one of the things I think that's been always the case when it was coming to teaching of reading, was it was an elementary thing, and, um, even one of the last biggest, the big initiatives through the state that really talked about reading many years ago, which was the Reading First Initiative, and it really only went up as far as third grade, and New Paltz has made it really clear to us that they're talking to high school teachers to, this, talking about how we can really make that progress, so I think it's a really great opportunity, and it's exactly what the COVID money was intended to do in regards to, um, learning loss, and so we can really put it in that, in that aspect of, of teaching. So, it's kind of exciting, um, but we'll have more information out to the teachers, as well as more information after tomorrow's release from the State Education Department.
And just a clarification, we, we are not a district that is total Lucy Colton's method of reading, okay?
Certainly not.
Certainly not. So, when, when Governor Hokel puts out that, you know, we haven't been with phonics or anything else, that, you know, Lucy Colton's way of reading, I just want to clarify that we're, we're not a district that is strict Lucy Colton's.
One of the most important parts about it is, is I think that people get behind something, you know, and people that are not well-versed in, in education are getting behind, um, all of the rhetoric out there in regards to teaching of reading. So I think that, you know, I was a reading teacher, so I want to say to you, we need to not throw anything away, and we need to be really mindful about how we move forward, and, and making sure we're all talking the same language in our school district, and it's not, it shouldn't be just talking the same language in, in pre-K through grade three, we all need to be talking about it all the way up, and I think that that, that's gonna make us a stronger school. Um, when teachers say to you in high school, well, they're not reading, well, we can all work to support that, and I think that that's the important part. So, unfortunately, you do hear a little bit of that rhetoric from governors and different, different, um, people, and they start talking about.
Question.
Question, Chris. Um, and then, we, Friday, we have a half-day professional development day, we have a variety of things, Shane, do you want to just touch on a couple of things we're gonna be doing?
Back in November, we had, um, we had some professional development for ELL students, students that are English language learners, um, each year, we're supposed to provide fifteen percent of our professional development, should be, should be mandated toward that, um, but we had, uh, we had a debt of students, so, um, we changed our plans back in November, so we have rescheduled those sessions for, for this upcoming Friday, and there's a few other, we're gonna be rolling out the strategic plan, um, some departments are doing some work together, but the ELL was the, kind of, the focus for this task.
Thanks. So that's, so that's all I have.
Okay. Um, Mr. Webanero?
If you're okay with me stating that.
I'd say you're fine.
Yeah, um, first of all, Happy New Year, hopefully two thousand twenty-four will continue to improve as we have over the last few years from, uh, the after effects of COVID. Uh, I think we're off to a good start, I don't know if, um, how much you've been briefed, Mr. Saunders, but I believe, uh, our PAT negotiating team that was working on the non-APPR evaluation process, I think, I believe they've come to an agreement that we're ready to take the ratification, we're gonna try next week, uh, so I think, I think that's moving in a positive direction, um, and I, I think we all can agree that the, uh, method of observation that was negotiated probably twenty-some odd years ago, um, before APPR is a little outdated, so, uh, I know our team worked really hard with, with, uh, Mr. Rabbaton and, uh, Mrs. Rabdo, and I think they've come up with a good plan moving forward, and hopefully one that if, uh, Governor Hokel agrees, or the legislature agrees to get rid of APPR and go back to putting observations back in local control, it's something that we can kind of just piggyback on, and we won't have to, uh, spend a lot of time, uh, negotiating that, so, um, I think that's been a, a positive start, I think it's really good. Um, other than that, um, I know we have a lot of people, um, I've heard of a lot of people going to the literacy thing tomorrow, and I think, uh, people are excited about that, um, and I think there, uh, I heard some people with some positive comments about, uh, MTSS meeting today that went, that went well, so, um, you know, I, I think we've got, uh, people around the districts who, districts who are, um, excited to be involved and have a voice, and I think that's, um, moving in the right direction, hasn't always been the case, and I'm glad to see that we are, uh, we are going that direction. Um, on a side note, I will share with you, as I walked out the door, my daughter said, convince them to two-hour delay, school closing, so if you're interested, you can be the first.
The south, the southern part of the county is doing that right now. I'm gonna close my phone.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll have to see. We're not supposed to give. Shh. Put it out there in the world.
Yeah.
Shh. Uh, next, administress.
So, tonight, you have the multi-year financial plan, a bunch of information session you live here.
There you go.
This is the fun stuff.
Yes, I can't believe it's already this time, um, as you know, this is my first beginning of the budget season, I changed up the PowerPoint a little bit, got a new theme going on, so, um, we'll start today with the multi-year financial plan. So, I want to start off with the present financial climate, so, foundation aid is now fully funded, which means it's based on legislative formula, um, that's good, because it is considered freely flowing, however, that means that large increases in future years are unlikely, since it's now based on actual data. Um, the State of the State address was today, the New York State Executive Budget must be released no later than January sixteenth, so we should be getting that information soon. Um, the other big piece is that our federal COVID relief funds are expiring in September of two thousand twenty-four, which means that as we go into this twenty-four, twenty-five budget season, we'll have to evaluate which programs we, uh, decide to keep, or which ones we decide to eliminate, and we used, we've been using that money to expand programming relating to learning loss, um, social emotional learning, mental health, physical health, safety, staff retention, et cetera. Um, we also are experiencing inflationary pressures and labor shortages, similar to many industries right now, and we do have upcoming negotiations at the end of this school year for CCA, sports staff supervisors, and management confidential. So, I'm gonna start here with some revenue projections, and, um, I'm going to start with our tax levy and our pilots, so this is actual for twenty-three, twenty-four, um, we have some projections for twenty-four, twenty-five, the allowable levy growth limit has not been released at this time, so we have a tentative projection of two percent. Um, I'm going to jump down to other districts and governments, and, um, you will see that that's reduced slightly from last year, because we used to have an out-of-district special education student paying tuition, we no longer have that student here. Um, and then you will see a big jump in previous years to last year and this year with our estimates in terms of, um, that's bank interest, so those interest rates have helped our bank account significantly compared to, uh, the COVID years. And then I'm going to jump into expenditure projections here, so we're gonna start with compensation, as you all know, personnel is the biggest piece of our budget, so compensation and benefits, and, um, you know, our estimates for twenty-four, twenty-five are certainly going to be adjusted as we finish up negotiations. Um, and then we have some, our contractual materials and supplies, BOSI's codes, there is a large jump here, um, at this point, the big jump is due to, um, rising special education costs, that includes BOSI's tuition as well as residential placements. And we also have employee benefits, as we know, health insurance keeps getting more expensive, and we expect that premium rates will continue to increase going forward. Um, again, these, just as a, as a note, these are all projections, and these will be refined constantly throughout the budget season, we still have six months left in the year, so as we go on, we will continue to revise them and present, um, more concrete numbers as we move along through the school year. So, when we look at our, um, general fund, uh, surplus and deficit projections, when we look at twenty-twenty-one, we had a very large surplus, that was because of COVID, so that was when we were, um, only operating, uh, we were fully remote on, I think, one day a week in twenty, twenty-twenty-one, so then twenty-one, twenty-two was the rebound year from COVID, we did run a deficit, um, last year, we had a very modest surplus, so at this time, based on our current projections, we are still looking at deficits for twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five, like I said, as we get more concrete numbers, this may change, we hope it changes, and that things, um, turn out better than they are projected, but at this time, this is what our current data and our assumptions are telling us. So, this is just another representation, uh, and then I want to talk a little bit about our fund balance, so, our fund balance in total has not increased significantly from June thirtieth, twenty-two to June thirtieth, twenty-three, however, the, uh, makeup of our fund balance has changed, so, um, our, this is a, a graphical representation between the two, the blue is our unassigned fund balance, the other colors are appropriated and reserves, so I'm gonna jump into a detail of last, of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, so we do have an unassigned fund balance of almost five million dollars, however, we did create a capital reserve last year, and that will help us provide funding for an upcoming capital project, the goal is to continue to build up that capital reserve with any excess fund balance that we have, to support a future project and, um, reduce the, the local share of an upcoming project. Um, we also have some reserves that, um, we, we monitor and will determine how that moves to be funded in the future. And so now I'm gonna jump into some, um, preliminary budget information, so we'll talk quickly about what is a budget, so it's a financial plan, uh, based on estimated expenditures and probable revenue for twelve-month period. So, school boards in New York State are required by law to prepare an annual budget, which becomes the basis for the property tax levy. So, our approved budget for twenty-three, twenty-four was just under fifty-three million dollars, um, I have a brief overview here of expenditures, which is basically the cost of doing business, and personnel costs, salaries and benefits make up the majority of our budget, approximately seventy-seven percent of the approved twenty-three, twenty-four, um, school budget, so we expect that that trend will continue into twenty-four, twenty-five. Uh, and the main revenue sources for our district are property taxes and state aid. So, here is the twenty-four, twenty-five budget development timetable, um, we're looking at February and March for two BOE meetings, and then we're gonna jump into the workshops to really talk about the balancing and discuss proposals, and we can always, uh, add more meetings if we find that's necessary, uh, and then we're looking at an April ninth timeline to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five proposed budget. Um, and so I just wanted to touch base on the twenty-four, twenty-five proposed budget guiding principles, um, so as, as in the past, we've started on a rollover-based budget, and so, um, we, we factor in general increases for salaries and operations and instruction, and then we will consider budget proposals, budget proposals will come forward to a leadership team as a group, we will discuss them, and then we will determine what comes forward to the board, and again, I want to reiterate that, due to the expiration of the COVID relief funds, we will have to make decisions on which programs to continue and absorb through the general fund, and which ones will need to be eliminated. And, um, another guiding principle is aligning financial resources with our strategic plan, that was recently completed, and we want to focus on balance. And we want to focus on balance-saving education along with responsibility to our taxpayers and sustainability for the future. So I continued Randy's practice of developing a theme for the budget so we could see where we started in 17, 18 and how we have developed over time. So our focus for 24, 25 is sustainability. Again, we have a lot of COVID money that we use to do really great things in the district, and we'll have to figure out how we can continue forward. So the next meeting will be the discussion of revenues, parameters, and proposals, and that'll be in February. Other any questions? Thank you.
I have one question.
Go ahead.
You mentioned just on subject, starting point is rollover-based budget increases related to instructions and operations. So are those increases like salary versus the account and all flatlining equipment personnel?
Yep, exactly.
Market pressure.
Yes, so we'll look at our, our personnel contracts. We'll factor in any negotiated increases as well as just in general, if, if materials and supplies are more expensive, equipment, things like that. Any major changes will be brought forward to the board as proposals.
And then so you guys follow that too. Running over on our budget, perhaps making a decision for programs, continuing programs. Is our conversation of we really value this program, but it's not sustainable in its current structure? Can we restructure this program to a more cost-effective level and not necessarily eliminate?
Absolutely, and we are actually, we actually expedited the timeline for budget proposals from our leadership team because we expect there will be a lot of discussion over what stays and what doesn't, and exactly that. We, we can be creative on how we fund things, if we could try to get other grants or use our existing grants in a different way. And so that will certainly be a part of the conversation.
Like we talked about last year too, when we were putting in certain things, when we were having the conversation of adding program, one of the things we talked about was we're going to be evaluating current programming in the district to determine, just because we added it last year doesn't mean it's something that we're going to get rid of. We may be looking at other things. So principles, the, the leadership team is right now looking at different options. So the only difference was in the past, what we would always do is we'd give a budget, a budget enhancement. We would, we would come forward with a budget enhancement. We're calling them budget proposals because what they're doing with those right now is they're, they're giving justification of like, we need this, and this is how we're, we're going to fund it. So we're, we're doing those conversations now. So the leadership team is currently working very diligently on those particular aspects of it. And with a deadline coming up, I will be receiving those in the district office.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And at this point, certainly I welcome.
You are welcome.
To leave if you don't.
We're here anyway.
We are in. We are sleeping in the car. I do have an extra minute. Yeah, this doesn't pack out yet. Okay. Now we have our consent agenda on our reports. And communications, any discussion on any of those? Nice gifts and donations too, because I'm very thankful for those, thank you. Okay.
Let me, let me, the, the last donation, not last, the latest donation to the backpacks program.
Yes.
Close we are to like talking off the, the energy.
I don't, but I can, yeah, I can absolutely.
That was quite a donation. I don't know how much the backpacks are now. They used to be like 150 something, but.
I think it was 200 or something.
200 and something now, yeah. So that was a sizable donation. I was really surprised with that. Good.
Okay.
Okay. So do I have a motion to accept and approve these, those consent agenda reports and communications?
Motion.
Motion, second. Mr. Peters, Mrs. Davies, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion here. Okay. Go down to new business. And we have, any discussion on the field trips, donations, and mileage rate? I have a question on our, United of the UN field trip. Have we figured out where we are with that and how much their contribution is?
Sure, so we, Kara and I were talking about day one, and we were going back into previous board meetings.
Yeah.
Conversation about like, where are we with that? We budget $4,000 in the general fund for the, $4,000. And two years ago and last year, we went up as high as $9,000 and capped it there. And after having, Kara did some, some preliminary numbers today after Bonnie and I had that conversation, just to come up with a number of where we're at right now. And we're still working with Beekman Town, so we'll be driving the students, Beekman Town will be driving the students down, we'll be going to pick the students up. They are riding the train.
Yep.
So there's a, there's a variety of different things. And, you know, I think the real hard part about it is, is this fundraising component of the Model UN that really needs, maybe there needs to be an infusion of fundraising. And this particular, you know, we have to have that conversation with them. I know it's tough sometimes to get the fundraising.
No, because there's only 10, 10 students.
Correct, correct. So the question then becomes, you know, if we, the recommendation that we have is to move forward with a, move forward this year with a cap of $8,000 to, to be, be sure we're covering everything that we need to cover. And then we need to have that conversation about is this something we're going to continue to do every year? Or is it going to be something that we may have to do on a every other year basis? I'm not sure. So, but that was what it was after Mrs. Barry reached out to me, was we did go as high as $9,000. We're, we're confident after looking at the numbers that if we went with a cap of $8,000 this year, we would be able to cover what we need to.
And they do have $1,000 that they, do we know how much they have fundraised?
I don't know. It's stuck in my head.
Okay.
I thought it was $1,000.
I just said expected contribution from fundraising was $1,000. And I, and the parents do take on the food and the train costs?
Yeah, and so one of the things that we, we want to make sure, the different years, we've done it differently. And we think that like last year, we had them pay for their own food, and we feel that's an important aspect.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, looks like that's what.
That's what, yeah.
That's what they said.
Yeah.
You know, the hotels cost certainly, you know, three days down there.
Yeah.
You know, so, and then we've worked it out, so that Beekman Town taking to the train station, and then we, we go to Boston to pick them up?
We're actually going to the train station as well to pick them up.
Oh, good.
We're going.
Oh, sorry.
I thought we were going to Boston.
It was back and forth for a little while, right?
Yeah.
So we're sending a driver on Sunday night. The driver will stay overnight and then bring them back because they would receive their, you know, teammates from hours driving down and back.
Sure, sure.
So they have to.
Okay, good. Okay.
And then we split both Beekman Town's cost and our cost for both districts.
Okay, good, good. Okay. Any other discussion or questions or anything on that? The donations for the mileage rate has gone up. Has everything else? Okay, motion to approve consent agenda of new business in items A through C. Motion. Motion, Mrs. Mitchell, second. Mrs. Boswell Davies, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion here. Okay, consent agenda personnel. Ms. Provost, where do we put the items B ones?
They're going to vote first.
What's that?
You'll vote first on consent A through E.
Okay.
And then we will add those separate.
Okay, okay. Any questions on any of the other, other ones? Hopefully we can tie down someone who leaves of absence and so on, phones out a little bit of that. It's just kind of a blank sheet right now.
We've been having some conversations in the district office about how we can create a system that we can track it in a more timely manner. Because not every one of those is an extended, extended leave of absence. Some of it can be a day leave of absence.
Yeah, so we can figure that one out, yeah.
So we're working on that aspect of it so that an office can say who their people are, the district office, and then report back and say to them, this person is at a particular, you know, over, over their time. So we're working on that right now. As we had discussed earlier in the school year, we were looking, I requested that the board create a position for the time and attendance program. Fortunately, we are not, weren't able to fill that position. And then I think as we're moving, you know, later in the school year, that's a position we're not going to be filling. But we're going to be looking at ways we will try to get that program. If we can do it in smaller pieces, we, we're going to be implementing that as well. So we're still working on that. So those will all help with the leaves of absences and, and make it a little bit clearer for the board. Okay?
And our one, our two, Rock and Dine House, now, Mrs. Rock, so she, is she at her fire room? Right? Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Related to that, she wants to, pretty much looking at the, kind of like, understanding like we, we can't work towards tenure or anything else because of the offset of restrictions. I know we also talked about it's very hard to get the talent we want. And really working on our internal pipeline, like finding, finding people, bringing them here, keeping them here, growing them. And so reading this contract, it doesn't exclude, prohibit, or like eliminate that track, but it doesn't encourage or promote it either. And so I'd love for us to consider as, as we work these contracts, where a person is uncertified, showing them a path of as you achieve certification with the district, we are more than happy to open up the doors for those.
So what you're reading really is the, is the standard language for the.
For the fire room.
For the fire room agreement. So just so you're aware, when we have that, when I meet with them, we have a conversation about like where they are, where they are with their degree, and different people are obviously different places with their degree. But the individuals who are often recommended to the Board of Education are people who are definitely in the path, working towards that. So in those circumstances and in the circumstance you're referring to, the individual is working towards that and understands that we, you know, we, we are looking for people like that. And then on, on another note, we're working with Plattsburgh State right now, working with students who would like to work in a particular district. And if they're willing to come and do their student teaching with us, and they're willing to put their time in with us, we're going to be considering them in the future. We're not saying they automatically get a job, but that's also supporting this. So what you're really reading is the language of a fire room, which is.
Standard language.
I just want to make sure that your candidates understand, you know, because this is, this is a long-term thing that feels indefinite. Where it's like, hey, next year, you work towards that, you achieve that, we are more than happy.
She gets a, anytime she gets a certification, she can change from a fire room to an appointment. I mean, if she had, I don't know how close she is to any certification, but if she got it in May, it could change.
For sure, and so that definitely can change a person's appointment as soon as they're, as soon as they, they're there. And that's, that's been the case with every one, and every one of ours.
So we need them to understand that if they're, don't pass their test or exam or something like that, or they, please, they forgot to submit to the state, their employment does, and 630, so it's important that they.
Yeah.
Understand, and doesn't mean they will be rehired in the fall, but that we have to repost, may have to reapply and go through that process.
Okay. So we will have a motion to approve consent agenda personnel, items A through E. Motion, the motion, Mrs. Mitchell, second. Mrs. Boswell Davies, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion here. Okay, now we have a motion to approve XP coaching appointments within the athletic department for the 23, 24 sport seasons. And we're going to do two, one. Yeah, one for one name at a time. First one will be Samuel Godfrey, we're going in alphabetical order. Motion to approve Samuel Godfrey in the boys' basketball program.
Motion.
Motion, Mrs. Mitchell?
Second.
Second, Mr. Peters, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion to approve Dr. St. Dennis in the boys' basketball program.
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Peters?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hamilton. And should we do a roll call?
We don't have to. If you want to just, you can call for a vote, and anyone that wishes to vote to abstain, we can. And should just give a.
Okay, motion to approve.
General.
Motion to, we got a motion, we got a motion. Yeah, yeah. Okay, approved vote.
Aye.
Aye. How many, anybody opposed? And I abstain.
And you would just.
So we got six, six.
Is it personal?
Personal reasons, absolutely. So we have six approval and one to abstain for personal reasons. Okay. And public comment, we got the information from Mrs. Metz, obviously he does. Both ways, she had sent it over, approved comments, and then she gave us the information, I think, to follow up.
Yeah, I'll reach out to Matt tomorrow, I'm sure, or Thursday. He's going to be at Moses.
Yes. And now we have PAC agreement. Any discussion? A motion to approve PAC agreement.
Motion.
Motion, Mrs. Mitchell?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hamilton, all in favor?
Aye.
Most, anyone opposed? Motion here. The academic calendar. Motion to adopt the new 23, 24 academic calendar. Any discussion, we've had discussion on this, and thank you, Mr. Webanero, for bringing it up at first. And looking at all that, I think we're a step ahead of, of many. And I know there's lots of discussion on it. So motion, Mr. Webanero?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Mitchell? All in favor?
Discussion.
Oh, discussion, yeah, sorry.
I talked to Mr. Jones about this. The day that there was a hat, and I can't remember, I want to say.
So the fourteenth was the, was the day that we had a professional, professional, full day professional development. And the fifteenth was going to be, or excuse me, I'm wrong. Let me restate this. We removed the fourteenth, which was a full day on our calendar as a professional development day in order for us to be able to take the day of the eclipse off. And that was discussed at our last meeting. And then board members had reached out to me in regards to concerns that community members have with our half-days. And we knew when we went into half-days, half-days were bar a burden to our community. And, but we also know that we have to provide levels of professional development for our teachers. And so what we're, we're talking about right now is the idea of taking the fifteenth and turning that into a half-day.
The fourteen. The Friday.
The March, March fourteenth.
You're going to swap it.
Swap.
So this one says March fourteenth.
That's the current.
By the half-day. Yeah, half-day.
The idea is to move the half-day to Friday.
Oh, okay.
Is moving that half-day to Friday.
So that's a change.
But that's what you really want to group tonight, and again.
So the three fourteen is going to be three fifteen.
Half-day?
It's not for new people. Okay. Because there's a number.
No, this is, this is Richard.
Oh, okay, that's why I put it off in there.
Well, this is the revised last time, now.
Yeah.
If you approve this, we'll be revising.
Oh, okay, okay.
But you, you will be approving the revision right now. You will be approving swapping the fourteenth.
The fourteenth. Fourteenth, fifteenth, or half-day.
Then we'll put a half-day or a Friday.
On Thursday.
Yeah, which I think is better for students and families and so on. And then we're going, is it going to be a full-day superintendent's conference on the eighth of April? And I think we need to get some information out to parents because I think parents are saying, oh, you know, my God, you've got, you've had a week vacation, now you're taking another day that, you know, the kid's going to be home. I don't think people realize the impact that's going to happen in this area. We are going to be impacted by thousands of people. They, they've said the hotels are already, we couldn't count it, I've been reading some different things about that. The hotels are already full. It's going to be horrendous, and what, what better to see it than a big empty parking lot of a school? Or a mall, or whatever. So I think school parking lots are going to be one of those places that people are going to start camping out, really.
One of the areas that you, the board talked about was that, you know, we talked about making sure our students, and they have the glasses. We've purchased those, they're here. We're going to be working with some of our, some of our staff members to come up with some ideas and activities that can be sent home and things that kids can do, pre-teaching and post-teaching. That can be here at school, so we feel those would be important aspects. So yes, that'll all come out to families as well.
That's good. I think it has to, I mean, nobody, yeah, okay, so there's an eclipse. You know, it's only going to be two or three minutes, but it's the root home, you know? And who knows what's going to be parked alongside the road? As I said, I, I can remember going to a rocket launch at NASA, and, you know, the traffic was on. traffic was unbelievable. This is similar to some big deal like that.
Well, I think that, you know, that, that aspect, we'd already approved. And I think the other part, which was maybe a little short-sighted on my part, was that we didn't talk about that half-day. And after it was brought to my attention, I thought it was important to bring to you. And I, and I feel comfortable with that half-day on a Friday, because the partnership that we have right now with PAT and the support that they're, they're having with their, with the, with the members to make sure that, that it's for professional development. We need to be there as a, as a staff working together on those things. So that'll be.
Good. So we have a motion to adopt the revised calendar, twenty three, twenty four calendar?
Yeah, we had Mr. Webanero.
We had, are you, a motion, second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so maybe that's going to be the last time?
Yes, let's hope, we want the calendar, just hoping.
Okay, and we're on to new business with the, the new business with the emergency project. Any discussion on that? Things needed. Yep. I don't, I don't see how we can say no, but that's my opinion.
So I think we have this last number, so we're proving this is emergency, we still have to draw in big four.
Yes, so we submitted today to, I signed things today to make sure we get numbers in the state head and that type of thing. So, you know, we're going to continue to do what we've been doing, being very mindful of what we're cooking in that kitchen, and making sure our custodian staff are doing an additional cleaning of that particular.
Right. For our recording, it is that the fan in the intermediate school cafeteria was not operating efficiently, and therefore we have to replace that fan and adopt it. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, motion to approve the emergency project?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Peters, second. Mrs. Mitchell? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. We have, the next one is the new business resolution for PACE. You have any discussion?
We have our policy.
Workplace violence.
Oh, I'm sorry, policy, I skipped over. Oh, that's the first reading of that, and you gave us the update today, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Any discussion on that workplace violence? I thought the wording was, you know, it was NISBO wording, and.
It's good.
Fine. So we can go to a second reading. And we, it's something that's necessary, we have to put it in effect, it has to be in place, all has a policy. So there's no question, we usually follow the NISBO guidelines or their policies?
And as you can see by that particular policy, we've got some real collaboration to do with PAT, P A C, and C S E A in regards to the workplace violence piece, and really addressing, we've got some committee work we've got to put into place, and so we'll be working with our partners to establish teams for, for covering everything we're talking about.
When was the date we got to have it in?
It's interesting, because it was only given to us the day that it was due.
Oh, okay, okay. I remember reading the date.
I think it's like February third.
I thought it was February.
Webinar, did you get that?
What's that?
There's a webinar schedule.
Yes, there is.
I believe it was January fourth, but it was.
It was supposed to be in, but they moved it to February.
February third, I think, which is why we are asking for a motion on this, and that the board is agreeing that at this time they're anticipating. You're anticipating passing it at the February thirteenth, so as long as we're making progress towards it.
Okay, good. And we've got a motion? No, well, you have that, no, that's, this new one. Okay, discussion and motion rather than what we used to do. So motion to conduct a first reading of policy of number eighty one thirty one two, replace violence prevention. And at this time, it's anticipated that a second reading and adoption will occur on February thirteenth, twenty twenty four, regular monthly meeting. So I have a motion, little motion, Mrs. Mitchell, second. Mrs. Peters, Graves, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Now, PACE, discussion? I think this has been a fantastic program, and it's taken a lot of hours, and it's appropriate that we do the M O A. Any other discussion? Okay, motion to approve the PACE, motion, motion, second, Mrs. Mitchell, second. Mrs. Graves. So we, that motion is that we resolve with the Board of Education, set the terms and conditions of the M R A agreement with approved administrators' counsel regarding the PACE program director position, authorize the superintendent schools to execute such M O A and take all actions necessary on behalf of the employer in effectuating the terms of the M O A. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. And we are not going into executive session. There's nobody signed for comments. So, Mr. Peters?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Peters, second.